You ready? That's it.
Let me move the camera up.
Are you saying that?
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to call this special meeting on the Madison Public Schools Board of Education meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one our God, and one everyone. Okay, thank you all for being here. This is a special meeting. We have a shortened agenda, but some business to accomplish. We'll start with a superintendent's report.
Yeah, I think, you know, last week was a two and a half hour report. We're certainly going to be much shorter than that. However, I'm going to give some just basic updates to where we are community-wise, a variety of different topics, and then building principals and Gail will talk about the distance learning launch that began on Monday. So just go from there and then make a couple items on the agenda. Some of my updates will actually inform some other items. I'm going to start right with the one that changes almost by the day right now, the executive orders that we received from the governor. It's helpful. It's great to have direction, but it certainly changes things quite quickly and sweepingly. So probably one of the most significant ones for the board to consider in the executive orders is the spirit of continuing the pay and employment of our employees based on the precepts in the Federal Cares Act. So the idea that that act was at the federal level and the executive orders that support that. Why does this matter? It matters because we've been able to continue employment along the way. We set out to do this in a way that maintains our employees in the event we do come back quickly. However, there's a couple of groups that becomes a little bit more problematic because their circumstances are different with contracts. That's transportation, and that happens to be the folks that support our cafeteria food services. So the most recent executive order actually impacts those directly. And we have interpretations coming from Shipman and Goodwin for the entire state, but also because we're a shipping client for Madison directly, on the implications faced on our own individual transportation contract. So the problem, and Art may want to contribute a little bit on this one, is that the contracts are slightly different by town. And as much as we have a sweeping executive order around transportation, there are nuances to the individual contracts. So, Art, anything you want to add about the transportation stimulus executive order and the local impact here in Madison?
Sure. Well, the big unknown is whether the stimulus, the federal stimulus, is going to fund any of this. But the executive order is basically requiring to extend entry agreement with the transportation. If you intend having to pay them, you have to pay them, you know, essentially for the part of the contract that keeps, is really geared towards keeping the employees employed, primarily keeping it with the idea of business continuity and that should we start school back up clean or abruptly, they should ready to go at a moment's notice is basically the interpretation that I've seen. Would be paying some portion of the regular fees of the formerly paid transportation, just to basically keep the drivers paid, a portion of the health benefits if they do have health benefits. And then there's also the mechanics and keeping the fleet, you know, up to snuff, that it's ready to go. The idea, though, is that it's not for profit. It's not to contribute to profit. It's supposed to be pulled as quick from the bus company as to what it's really going for. And again, the idea is just so that we're sure that they're there, ready for us when we're ready to go back. And it's very hard, drivers and retaining drivers, and not like anybody that are hiring them right now, but there are other sectors of, you know, business that might be looking for work. You wouldn't want to have an issue where you couldn't get the bus company back online to critical service if we're going to have school. But that's the basics. I had one meeting from General Services, National Express, the parent thing, and I have another one scheduled tomorrow afternoon, but hopefully, you know, in between the two meetings is when the last executive order came out.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll make some good progress. Been very, very good to deal with so far.
Art, Kirk has a question.
Thanks, Tom.
Art, the responsibility falls on us as, as the educational district, as opposed to falling on the business, in the sense that the business is not going out and looking for the extended unemployment benefits that are being made available currently as part of the, as part of the government's program and/or some of the various and sundry other offers that are, that are, not offers, that's what choice words, my apologies, some of the other policies that are being made available in order to keep people's income as close to their full employment income as possible. It's on us, not on the business?
It is. As I understand it, it's the school districts or the towns, their contracts are with the towns. But it is, the school district is responsible to make payment and, you know, along those lines. I do believe that all options are being looked at. I don't know whether or not the extended unemployment fits on the table, but then you have two of their health benefits anyway. So there's some requirements there also. Whenever we would come to a mutual thing about, we'd be run by Art already, just to make sure that everything is as per its effect. And again, I don't know whether there's reimbursement in school district in the end.
Okay. The other area that, a couple of areas that the executive order's impact, one, it's kind of hot off the presses yesterday as well with FMLA, the Family Medical Leave Act. There is language in this most recent executive order about acknowledging and approving FMLA time if your child's schooling or place of care, which we would assume to be some kind of preschool or childcare, is closed because of the virus. The issue that raises is we probably have 50% of our faculty that that's impacted. So I'm not sure. The language in there is very nuanced. I didn't find it to be as categorical in saying you must. There were some as practical and so forth language. So again, we're relying on Shipman to help us interpret that, as they're doing for a lot of districts in Connecticut right now. So we're waiting more to come on that one. The final one, which is a peculiar bargaining group for us because there's, the NAGE group is our cafeteria folks, and they're on the agenda, but I think the executive order may make this item on the agenda moved. It's a peculiar group for us compared to all the others because it's relatively dependent. So our cafeteria staff is not the same as the MEA, or MACE, and so forth.
Can I, sorry.
Yeah.
Can I just ask everybody on the phone to make sure they're muted? Because we're getting a lot of feedback. Thank you. Kevin?
The other thing that makes them different from the other bargaining groups is they're the only group up for negotiations right now. So, you know, we have MOUs in place with the MEA and with MACE and so forth, who's now called UPSU. But NAGE was one that we had talked about doing that, but I think this executive order kind of takes that and makes us have to reconsider it. So just about six o'clock, we got, Heather and I got an email from Shipman that they're working to interpret the impact on negotiations, on the current status. So there'll be much more to come, I think, probably in the next couple of days on that one. But this keeps changing pretty rapidly. So as we move forward, we'll keep updating the board.
So again, Tom, if we are, again, only in the city senate, that relates to our responsibilities as a district, would we have an option to look at some of the government programs that are designed to support incomes during this period of time?
And that, that seems to be, the language that I read today is the spirit of this. And it references specifically in the, in the guidance interpretation initial from Shipman, it mentioned specifically the Federal Cares Act, which is to keep folks whole at this time. So Shipman is looking to establish a very clear through line from federal dollars to district expenditures. I think we just need to be patient and let this play out. I think districts are going to be moving in relative unison here because it's going to impact us fairly consistently. The only nuance is that these are a couple of groups that do have specific contracts that maybe, you know, the language may be different town to town. But besides that, the general spirit is what we're saying, is to keep people whole throughout this time.
Yeah.
Which have been our operating principle from the beginning. So to know that our teachers are working and these groups that maybe like buses are not running, but these federal dollars possibly can help keep them whole. That seems to be the spirit of all this.
But we're keeping them whole. But when you say we're keeping them whole, we're keeping them whole at 100%?
Yes, right. Well, our, our time, Heather, are we at the pay period right now, where we are in between pay periods or no?
We have a payoff coming up this Friday, and we've made it consistently from MACE, whatever the balance of their salary is paid, we're now at the end of the year, which is evenly divided around the pay period starting this Friday to the end of the year.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, because, you know, the federal program for unemployment insurance, you said about 45.5%. And some of the new federal programs that are being proposed are trying to get closer to 100%.
The interpretation that we've gotten so far from the Cares Act, is that what the goal is?
Yeah.
Again, we're going to wait for Shipman to be black and white and say this is how you could interpret or should interpret.
Okay.
And some of, that Art pointed to earlier, some of the towns, the town holds the busing contract, schools hold the busing contract in other towns. So that's why I think it's very specific in each town that we're talking about. Couple of them-
Are there any other board member or Heather comments regarding this before we move on to the next agenda item? Okay.
Okay, a few other updates. Art successfully upgraded the email system over the weekend. We'll get the details on it. He did it in the, in the dead of night, and we expected a ton of email activity, and the system worked incredibly internally. You know, teachers were emailing each other, emailing out in and so forth. So I wanted to recognize the tech team there. The tech team with their support on the website, providing resources. I will say over and over again, none of this is perfect, but there's been some great resources put up there. We had, I think, less than, less than eight or 10 password resets requests on the very first day, which we expected to get a ton. So that was a good indicator that responsiveness was there. The tech team's been outstanding all through this. We did have some reallocation of staff when it came to assignment. So we have a gentleman with a very strong tech background who happens to be our program coordinator for art. His name is Bill Summer. And Bill, because the art program's not really writing curriculum right now, they're delivering their art program online, Bill has offered to serve, he doesn't have classes, he was offline to be a curriculum lead this year. He offered to serve as a tech support person. He's been assigned groups of people. I want to thank Gail, TJ, and Bill for coming up with that idea to move forward. A couple of interesting, you know, contacts I've gotten. 3D printing is huge right now, huge, when it comes to ventilator tubes and when it comes to, you know, masks that are being printed in with 3D printers. And we've had a couple of folks reach out. We haven't been able to find a mask for anybody with our printers, but we're open for business on that. Everyone has offered to purchase the filament or reimburse us with a filament and print away and use our printers. So we're certainly open to helping out any way we can with that. We also have some students who are-
Sorry.
That's okay. Some students who are pretty involved in trying to volunteer and help. BioMed in Guilford is really up their game. The student is helping out there and wants to maintain a nine to three schedule there to help while they're in school. It's unbelievable. So those kind of stories are just remarkable, and they're there. We need to tell them more. FEMA is another thing that we have to be mindful of because Stacy got in way ahead of us and set up accounts for us to keep track of any costs that we have that may be reimbursable from FEMA. So we got out of the gates with that very quickly. And one last update, we got a very late message from the commissioner today, probably three, four o'clock, and it was just some updates from his chief of staff, a variety of ones. But the one that stuck out to me was, I haven't had a chance to talk to TJ about this yet, he had entertained a conference call with high school students about graduation. And I think the concern is that if we don't start having conversations about it now, that kids will and families will try to organize something on their own, and it might not quite align with what we're being advised to do as far as with the social distancing. So there was a very direct request to try to engage our high school students, our seniors, sooner than later, and to let them know that is if and when the decision is made from the state level, local level to cancel the rest of the school year's classes, that we will already have some ideas on the table about how to maybe honor and commence our kids through graduation. So those are just in general updates across the district. We'll talk calendar later. Very initial budget review, but I think it's probably appropriate, if there's no questions, to give it to our, our five principals, our three assistant principals and Gail to talk about, just very briefly, how we have our first three days underway in our launch of our online distant learning program. We just had success. We just had challenges that were solved and challenges that we're still faced with. So I'll hand it off. We have no particular order, so if anybody would like to contribute, I think we talked about just some overall takeaways for the first three days, any problems immediately that emerged that we solved, and any problems that are kind of out there, still trying to solve them. I'll just hand it over to the team.
Hey, Tom, Mike, you go if you want me to.
That'd be great. Thanks, Dave.
So I would say pretty successful rollout. You know, the fact that a 100-plus teachers have a thousand-plus students engaged in online learning is pretty impressive all at one time, you know, between the hours that we've established. The teachers, several teachers have reported that students seem pretty pleased to be packed and reconnected with our school community, which has been really positive. Of course, they'd rather be in the building than in the virtual world. The teachers should be given a lot of credit for a really quick learning curve. They're already actually teaching in the virtual world. It wasn't just a live introduction to talk about the upcoming learning. They're actually teaching and classes are moving forward at a really positive rate thus far. Some of the problems we were faced with, and I think we handled really appropriately, student needs for technology. We had over 40 students request Chromebooks. They all have them. We had a safe pickup process for that piece. There was and still continues to be needs for instructional materials. Gail's idea with bins outside has been tremendous. We fill the bins, get drive-by, their parents can pick up specific items. Some of the items are books. We even have a piano one and a piano two class, the elementary and middle school. Principals were gracious enough to lend us some keyboards, and we actually handed out keyboards. So we're having live piano classes that are happening in students' homes, which is pretty impressive. We've had questions from teachers around tattoos. It's been pretty overwhelming, but Mike Ginsburg, Mike Kiefer, Artsicle, Gail, Tom, and Liz have jumped in and turned on an incredible amount of resource and really quick responses to help teachers get on board. Some of the challenges that I anticipate, managing student misbehavior. We haven't really had any yet, but it happens. I'm curious how we'll manage that. Communicating electronically now with an entire school community will certainly be a challenge, but so far we're doing a good job with that. Remaining connected as a faculty is a high priority. You know, there's a chance we're not going to see each other for a long time, you know, individually. So we're going to have to come up with a plan, which I started today with my faculty. And then one of the biggest issues that you can read about just about in any newspaper is the Zoom bombing that's happening out there, where Zoom is being, you know, hijacked almost, where people are getting in even if there's a password and a meeting code. And that's proving to be disruptive at some points, and we're trying to figure out how to address that. Hopefully Zoom will take that on. But I would say thus far, after a few days in, very positive, and we're looking to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. The Zoom, TJ, the Zoom waiting room that was established, I know we're getting really technical here if folks are not familiar with Zoom, did that help resolve that issue?
It certainly reduced it, but I talked to a couple of teachers today who have a very high degree of understanding of technology, and some people still got in. They don't believe it's students who actually got in, you know, with the waiting room and the password, and they can't figure out how. I do have a to-do list, task tomorrow to reach out to Mike Ginsburg and Mike Kiefer tomorrow and connect them with the teacher to see if there's some type of resolution. Again, Zoom's getting a lot of heat for this right now. Hopefully they'll be able to resolve it as well because it's certainly an issue that extends far behind, far beyond the Madison Public Schools.
And if I can build on the Chromebook request, just for a general update, we had set out to make sure, we're not a one-to-one district, and we talked about that last meeting. We wanted to make sure that we had a Chromebook for every household who needed one. That was our initial basic requirement was if you need a device, we're going to have one for it. And we met that need. Anybody who's asked for one because they needed one device. Now we're looking at the next tier and saying to make some special need situations. We have multiple kids, we have three kids and so forth. So how can we help? And we have, we have enough Chromebooks that we can still get out, and we will. And the principals have kept a log of those parents to reach out to and say, we can now circle back to you because our basic needs have been met. Now we can go beyond that. And they're keeping a log of that in the school level. We have quite a summer project ahead of us as far as how to get them back to the schools that they came from.
And encourage, right?
Yeah. Yeah. And those guys have been great at helping. Okay, Paulson has a bank of cards. We need to get 20 more over to Ryerson, and those guys bring them all over. So they developed a system, you know, decentralizing if they figured all that out, so.
And given that more students are using Chromebooks, is there a stockpile of if they start to break down that we can reissue?
We still are over 400 Chromebooks, 450 Chromebooks. That's just a general estimate that we have. We want to make sure that basic need from that, now we're rolling out more. We will continue to.
Okay, great.
Okay, somebody, another building principal?
Happy to jump in. I think TJ covered a lot of it, so I'm not going to repeat what he said, but I certainly agree with everything that he did say. A couple of things to add to that. I think what's been working for us is having set hours where staff can come into the building as well. And I believe everybody's doing that too, where if they want to come in, staff certainly can come in. We just monitor who's coming so that we can clean before, we can clean afterwards. We don't have too many people in a given space at any one time. I think ESS continues to be working well. I had a conference call, and I have one scheduled every week with both the provider at Paulson and the person who's overseeing that program. And obviously, I communicate with Liz throughout the process with that too. Plus, a very vulnerable population of kids, but we're keeping a close eye on through this. And I think that that's, that's working well so far as well. A couple of issues that we've come up with, I honestly feel like I could say this any day of the week, that there's always troubleshooting that happens whether we're in school or out of school. And sometimes, some of the related arts codes, we've got kids who went into the wrong code. You know, little things like that that we've been certainly fixed. Like TJ, we've got the Chromebooks going. Unlike high school level, though, we've got the requests that children can get things out of their lofts, we've got them picking up instruments. And again, the system with the bins outside really is working very well. I happen to have three long-term subs in the building. Again, I've worked with Heather, there's a system in place. The kids don't really know any difference. They know they've got a teacher that they check in with, and the communication behind the scenes is absolutely incredible. And I think communication was one of the biggest concerns that I had. And I still think that we are still working on that and aware of it. But the councils have communicated with every single grade level of students. I've got that two-way communication with staff coming to Martha and I and us communicating back to them. And that's just very important to us, and you need this concept. The difference is that it's all now primarily through email. Not many people are calling, to be honest. It's primarily through email, and nobody is really coming in face-to-face, which is very different than what I think we're used to as administrative. So I think what, what we don't know, though, is we're still, we don't know what's coming next. We're still, you know, we've got a lot of plans in the works, and we've got things that we're considering, things on our list of things to do. But it's, to me, the difference is, this is really all-consuming right now. And you know, we've still got, then, got on our list of things to do. We've got staff needs higher. We've got placements of students. But obviously, this is the priority right now, and we'll get to that. We've got a timeline that Martha and I are working on and make sure we get to all those things. But this is the priority right now to make sure that it's smooth and effective for everybody involved.
Thank you, Catherine.
Are you jumping in?
Yeah, go ahead, Frank.
How's everybody doing? I'm pleased with the start. You know, just really echoing what Catherine and TJ said. You know, everybody around you requested Chromebook, has Chromebooks, all those good things. You know, when you ask what's working, you know, the teachers are working. We're working, but all those teachers are working extremely hard. Our coaches are incredible. Their work is behind the scenes under Gail's leadership has been unbelievable. You know, our parents are getting communicated. I spent a lot of time on the phone today, actually. It's funny, Catherine should say that. I was on the phone more today with parents and even teachers, because sometimes it's easy to just say, give me a call. So doing more of that. But every parent's getting communicated with ASAP. Big adjustment, I think, at the four or five grade level is the use of technology. Some kids in some families, very easy, very smooth. Others, it's new learning, whether it's the older child, only child. So that's a bit of a learning curve. The Zooms have gone well. I think, I think so many teachers across the district and over that, kind of head of communication piece with teachers. And, you know, I said this to Tom earlier, our teachers all are for their best with Florida Madison. And people are just, they really want to do a great job. And, you know, my teacher was saying, I have a faculty meeting via Zoom. Tomorrow, we're setting up a plan. And you want to compliment, but you also want to know the pace themselves a little bit, because I know so many are just working so hard because their level of technology varies. You know, I think week two will be better than week one, even in my own district, or I've been in those here. I saw a significant difference in week two than week one. And just a little calmer, a little more consistent, a little bit more fluid for both that. So I was just forward to that. But I'm just so proud of everybody on the team. I think, you know, from Tom to Gail to the historians, the secretary who worked at R and D from the Capitol Monday, you know, all of a sudden we say, wait, we need to make a bunch of packets of our math packets, of parents' nasses. Our secretary's, her work was all done by like day thirty quarter, nine. Well, there you go. And the bin system's really working. So again, I know in a lot of things across the district, and in the general district in general.
Hey, Frank?
Yeah.
Frank, I know you talked with Elise at something today, and I think she and Jim were looking for sort of a communication that was sort of a step-by-step, how do you go from one class to the next? And, and are we, are we moving toward sort of a centralized communication that's more of a step-by-step? This is how you get on. This is where you go for this class. This is where you go for the next class. This is how you access the interior?
Google Classroom is pretty good. I think people would prefer it this way. I think, I don't think understanding Google Classroom was the issue. I think some people would like to see it easier, but I don't think that's, that was not the issue in the conversation I had today. And there's so many people in different places in terms of their technology, the ability and their technology, you know, ease. But it's interesting too, and I appreciate some parents and a couple of them in the room there. I clarified an email today with some, we set out a schedule just to get parents to understand that students are not going to be sitting in class from nine to two online. I ran that by Tom, and we clarified that. I got a lot of positive feedback from parents for clarifying that. We know that things can be done, you know, outside of that window. You know, we share with you videos when we put that at different times, where these live sessions don't have to happen immediately. And I also shared with, talking about another parents that, because people are anxious to give feedback. We always appreciate feedback. And I shared that there'll be a survey going out, I believe, Gail, next week or, or in week two, that allows parents to kind of give us some feedback, all parents. And so I think- And so I think, or is it placed there? But in terms of where students go next, I think I clarified that today in an email to the whole school.
Frank, if I could jump in about that. That was a very helpful email that you sent out today in terms of what was the expectation for the Brown students. What I've heard, just to try to clarify it, because I think, you know, the goal is to continuously improve the experience for the students. From a number of parents, I think we've seen some emails to this effect, but also just verbally. And my own experience in going through that is that it's not, and this is not about Brown. This is just, you know, we have Jeffrey's experience and Brown's experience and other parents describing other experiences and it's probably different by classroom as well, but it's very difficult for even with a parent to understand what the next thing is to do. There's not a really clear sequential path to take through the day that kind of says, you know, if you're in this lesson, you do this, and then you do this, and then you do this. That's easy to navigate. And I say that as somebody who completed a doctorate somewhat online and somewhat in person. So I'm used to the difficulty of online learning. I think that it could be that it's just a matter of how it's laid out for folks. It's something a lot like, and it's not entirely clear that you need to move from this step to this step. One last thing I'll say about it is just that it's not something that, I think our youngest kids, I'm hearing from people, can do independently at all. They can't, the Brown kids and up maybe can figure out some of it. It's probably easiest for the high school students, I would imagine, but for the youngest kids, I think they're having trouble understanding what comes next in the sequence. So just raising that is hopefully a helpful point that I've heard from parents that I think would clarify this process for a lot of people.
Thank you for explaining that, about which I was so inarticulate.
Yeah, Craig, that was well said. Yeah.
I actually would add to that, that I think, you know, something that we anticipated and doing our best to support, the tech folks are there supporting even more so with these folks, is that if you're a 20, 25 years teaching first grade and never use these tools because Google Classroom was not part of the repertoire for 20, 25 years of first grade, that person has that much more. And that's why we put the tech resources and the coaches towards those folks where if I've been teaching, you know, anatomy physiology at the high school and I've been doing Google Classroom and I've been sharing videos and everything, it's a whole different curve. So it's very valuable feedback.
I would imagine to, and I read this, I think Frank, in your email today, that as the live, the live, you know, morning meeting and things like that happen, that for these younger kids, that will become maybe a place to get some of that guidance? And that's set to start next week, am I right?
We'll be doing a pilot live next week and then we're doing two-week follow-up.
Yeah, and I'm also really sympathetic and Greg, I know you're one of those parents, that with younger kids who, you know, do need more hands-on instruction or a parent by their side, when you've got two, three, four kids at home that need guidance and support, what a challenge that might be for families. So hopefully, as we navigate through this, the kids will become more familiar, our parents will become, that are able to develop routine and it sounds like the teachers will have more of an opportunity to work live with students, which might also help. But all good points.
Quick statement if I could. So I just wanted to say that at Paulson, I don't know if the Google Classroom looks the same from grade to grade when they log in, but I've asked some of my daughter's friends, they're eighth grade, how they felt it went the first couple of days, if they had any issues logging in or anything. And they're very familiar using Google Classroom because they use it all the time. And so most of them felt that it was very easy to access and that everything went smoothly. In fact, they felt that they didn't have a lot to do, that perhaps they were being eased into it. So I think, I don't know when you log in, if everything looks the same for eighth grade, seventh grade, fifth grade, whatever, but if they don't, then you could take a look at the eighth grade modules and maybe see if their stuff is different because they're finding it easy.
Good point. Yeah, I think a lot of that has to do with the familiarity.
I also think in the final analysis, we'll all look as a profession and say, this is, you know, three months from now, this is not the way to teach early childhood learners and elementary kids, they need to be in a classroom, you know.
One-on-one.
I think as you go to high school, college and beyond, it could be a viable option, but not as exclusively as an approach.
But I think the snapshots are important to hear, so thank you to all the board members that have been helpful with that. And I anticipate getting a lot of guidance from parents when the survey goes out as well, which will be really helpful.
Becky and Kelly, do you want to combine the elementary take?
Sure. I can start, Kelly, if you want. I think, you know, in my opinion, our biggest win this week was just seeing kids reconnecting with their teachers, seeing them reconnect with each other. As many bumps and tech issues as there have been, there's been a lot of really sweet moments, sweet videos that kids have made for their teachers and vice versa. When I got to work this morning, a little kindergartner had written on chalk on the sidewalk, like, "Kindergarten chalk needs you." So there's just a lot of really heartwarming moments too. And Kelly, do you want to share kind of the wins you've had at Ryerson as well?
I think the largest wins are the efforts that the teachers are making, the supports that the coaches have provided to the teachers throughout the district in IT, language arts, in math. I know that there was a reference made in terms of people's capacity level, in terms of their ability to navigate setup through the classroom. That certainly varies depending on the teacher. But any question concerned Lich has been well supported by the district. It's just been really impressive to watch the open-mindedness of staff and the willingness, because bottom line, all they say to me, this is for the kids, so that's so important. And quite honestly, as the parents, they're doing their jobs at home as well as becoming the primary educator for their child. And they're calling up, they're asking questions. And we, administrators and teachers are being very responsive and supportive to them. So it's really a collective effort. So it's been great this week in terms of people's patience and open-mindedness.
Kelly and Becky, problems that you have solved already that emerged the first couple of days and problems that are still out there that we have to get our arms around?
Well, I think the fact that we have Chromebooks that are being borrowed by our kindergartners and first graders who have had very little experience with that. But it is, if a family needs it, it's been offered, it's been provided, and then it's kind of giving that on the phone, through email, through a video chat, support of how do you navigate this device that you've never used before? And now the urgency is there because you're learning at home with mom and dad. That's been one, but I think the fact that we provide the hard copies as well as the option for parents to take some help for themselves. So Greg, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, just to secondly, the, you know, the gamut of tech fabbiest at the elementary school does seem to be a bit wider. And, you know, I have some teachers that have worked around the clock last week to get their Google Classroom up and running, but even on day one and two, we're still just not posting it quite in that right way that was user-friendly for parents. So we got that straightened out today with the help of, again, the coaches and people assigned to each grade level to really make sure we're streamlining things for families. Because we understand that mom and dad are on their laptops for work and that this is not independent work for our youngest learners. They can't navigate Google Classroom, you know, independently at this point. So trying to be respectful of that, trying to get the message to parents that, you know, are taking a little bit more of a learning curve, that it's okay, you know, focus on the reading and the math, work for two hours and then call it quick, you know, we're all easing into this. So parents have been really great in reaching out and, you know, we had lots of phone calls on Monday, not as many yesterday, and had to work through today. So to me, that's a nice data point to say that we're, we're getting there.
And I would just say lastly, in terms of challenges or next steps, I think this was stated earlier at the upper level, but it's really remaining connected as a learning community with parents, with teachers and with students. And finding those ways to remain engaged in the work. That is a very large challenge and one of my highest priorities right now.
Thank you.
It's a live-action parent-teacher association.
Yeah. Gail, do you want to just summarize from a district level?
Yeah, I hope everyone's well. I gave the reflection off my glasses, I don't know what to do about that. But from a district level, I concur with everybody that the responsiveness of the staff, the principals, the coaches has been one of our biggest successes. The consistent contact that we've been able to maintain with everyone. I meet regularly with those people who are leading the efforts across the district. The bins have been a really nice alternative for parents who need another option and another way that they engage their learners. I think, you know, one of the biggest successes is the website coming wide with all the modules in a consistent format. That was a huge lift by the tech department and by Cheng and Sheila and every teacher in the district and every discipline. I also want to recognize one of the bigger successes is that Help Desk. The Help Desk is responsive and we're adding to the Q and A as parents are coming up with more and more questions about accessing technology, how to print from home, different ways that they can return the work. So that's been very helpful, so I encourage parents to keep checking that Help Desk because the dropdown menu is continuing to grow as we come up with more and more resources for parents to help them through this difficult time. I think that one of the problem-solving things that we've been doing is also making sure that the staff has the content that they need a couple weeks out outlined in their modules, so we can keep up with the posting for the community, but we can also keep up with posting in Google Classroom in the event that someone is ill and someone needs to take over. Another piece of problem-solving is kind of creating our bench of people to fill in for individuals who might become ill or their families have such illness that they keep them from their online modules. So we're trying to assign very carefully our coaches and our staff that's available to be backup and we're trying to partner and buddy our staff so that they can sub in Google Classroom. I think another piece that we're really looking to problem-solve, another challenge that we're looking at is the related arts and how to support a reasonable delivery schedule with live sessions versus sessions that might be taped because of the amount of sections that related arts offers. That is one of the pieces that we're continuing to work on. You know, paper two, and I think everybody said it beautifully, paper two, learning online is certainly not a design that you would go after in a less challenging time period in history. Paper two, we'll look at a couple of different resources and a couple of different options that districts are using. Some of them are using a lot of game-type activities and their delivering model is in keeping with more of a blended instructional model. And we're really aspiring to do that. I have two young grandchildren in different districts. One is working independently in paper packets with no passing or return. And the other one is working in game-type modules in another district in Connecticut. Again, not any face-to-face contact with teachers or any engagement with the other kids in their class. I think another thing that we're facing along with a lot of districts is what's too much and what's too little for learners and what's independent and what's dependent for our learners to do. So we continue to refine that. I think the feedback that we've been getting is really helpful to do that. We do look forward to getting some more feedback in our surveys once we've had a whole week under our belt and people are feeling at least that they have connected with the Google Classroom. We also have asked that our teachers are posting work to Google Calendars to help with the balance on the workflows and also for our youngest learners to make sure that parents, the verdi and option is on so you can see what's expected. I do think one of the problems that we continually work on is how to work with special education hand-in-hand. So we're putting in some provisions for that and I want to thank Liz for her work in that regard. And I do think that we've shored up in problem-solving how we want to look at attendance and engagement, allowing flexibility for our learners, especially in the beginning parts, to prioritize core areas and then also follow up with kids who might not have engaged at all during the course of the week. And I want to thank the principals for helping with that. That's an overview from my perspective.
Just to talk about engagement for one second, you know, and then we'll have Dr. Vitale weigh in on the special insight. We're just probably at the onset of the spread of what's being predicted around Connecticut and learning, online learning right now. So I think it's very, very sad and unfortunate and really devastating, but I think that's going to happen a little bit more.
It's going to get worse.
We got to get prepared by all the accounts from the federal level and the state level that that's only going to grow. And I think that we ought to be sensitive to that as far as when it comes to work with individual kids. And that's why decentralized the communication between parent and teacher, parent or principal is probably most important right now so that we can be sensitive to each individual family's needs, so.
How is the Help Desk staff?
Help Desk staff, Gail, how is it staffed?
It's a combined effort. Some questions are answered by the tech department and they provide support. Mike Ginsburg, Mike Kiefer have been answering a lot of questions and adding to that piece, sometimes with Sheila and Cheng adding to that as well. So we're trying to make sure that we're addressing the more common current concerns around access and different ways to approach some Google Classroom and Zoom and training people in those mechanisms, those delivery models. But I do see that our next level of professional development would be around how to build effective distance learning, how to really carefully craft what that looks like in all of these different grade levels. So we've started to pull together some different expert videos that are coming out regarding that and looking forward to continuing to grow that work. We're also connecting with the, a couple of different regional groups that are problem-solving around things that they're coming up with similar to ours. And those groups will continue to help us to understand things like the grading challenges that high school is facing and also some of the challenges around time and independence for our youngest learners and supporters.
Gail, has there been any more guidance from the commissioner about grading or assessments?
April 10th. April 10th.
We were told April 10th is when they anticipate that they will have some statewide guidance. I don't know how definitive it'll be, I'm sure it'll be a local decision, but all the superintendents that I've spoken with are really looking for some type of uniform approach on that, especially at the high school level.
I think it's so important.
We just did a big conversation regionally about that and everybody's waiting for that direction.
April 10th, they told us on the commissioner's call yesterday. Gail, the one last thing, and I'll turn it to Liz. We had preparations, so talk about a problem that we, you know, kind of somewhat anticipated, but it was worse than we anticipated, was the paper copies, the hard copies that were requested and probably needed when it comes to some of the programs like math, for example. Can you talk about, you know, kind of how that, you know, caught us on our heels and how we responded to help address that?
Yeah, so the paper copies, you know, I think when we spoke last week, I talked about the bins as kind of a backup. That we have these bins at the different sites and there's pickup and drop-ups, but we didn't think that they would be highly, as highly utilized as they are. And definitely, we had some concerns come up at Brown regarding the math, mathematics, and how to turn in the math and how easy it was or not easy it was to print out math. So within- So within hours, we were printing out, and thank you to Frank and all of his staff for printing those out, filling the bins with those packets, making them accessible and available to everyone. I do think one of our challenges in addition to printing out the materials and keeping up with that request, especially when Google Classroom might be difficult, paper two, is when they all come back. And we're trying to encourage our parents to take snapshots and then send them back to the teachers so we don't have a lot of paper coming back with that we then scanning and sorting and taking snapshots of. So we are hoping that the return is a little bit more online than in person, but we're certainly prepared for both. And I want to thank the principals for quickly coming up with utilizing our care professional staff and our office staff to keep up with those demands. I also want to acknowledge that there are some English language learners and some other individual cases that are requiring at the higher levels that we print out packets and provide those packets and we've been able to keep up with that as well.
Thanks, Gail. Liz, do you want to give your update from the special education perspective?
Yes. From the State Department of Education, really the biggest thing is putting families first right now and doing what works for families. So some of the families are very appreciative of having virtual live sessions and others would prefer to have phone calls or have emails. So it's really about making what works best for each family. And so that's really what we've been doing is individualizing these family needs. I have to, you know, concur with everything everyone said, but, you know, with my specialized department and my related services, the tremendous amount of work that they've done and many of them, if you think about my related services, a physical therapist and occupational therapist, these are not careers that you ever thought you'd be teaching virtually. So the amount of work, learning, collaboration that my team had had has been amazing. In terms of my special ed teachers, the Wilson Reading Program came out with new guidance on how to teach the program virtually. So getting all that information, sharing it with staff, it's just been absolutely tremendous. The amount of work they've all done this week and the past two weeks has been amazing, which is why this week has gone so well. This week, one of the biggest things, we put together a lot of different online programs and subscriptions. So we put together guidance that the teachers would share with parents. I've had a lot of troubleshooting with even parents and staff making sure everybody's getting into the right program and everything set up. Also doing some troubleshooting in terms of, you know, our heart of hearing. So we've been working with, you know, figuring out something to work with Zoom for closed captioning that would work out well. And so we were finally able to find a great solution today that we're getting up and running for tomorrow. I also think through this time, we've really tried to keep consistency and going with what Catherine said about, you know, keeping those effective school solution meetings. You know, we have one tomorrow at the high school. And keeping that weekly preschool meeting with staff together. Keeping things normal as we go through this different process, I think is very important. I've even sent out sometimes a morning newsletter to all of my staff saying, you know, reset outside today and just keeping things, you know, keeping some consistency and routine that they're used to as we go through this new adventure. And finally, I just also, in terms of the preschool and also the principal there, we sent out packets last week that had a bunch of different unit lessons. I just sent out an e-notify and putting together different arts and crafts and hand-on activities that I'll be having a safe drop-off pickup for families to come and get those supplies and then they'll also be left in the bins if they're not able to come at that time. So that way, parents aren't just working off of worksheets or online programs that they have the opportunity to have, you know, arts and crafts and food and all of that good stuff that we want for our three, four, and five-year-olds. And I would just say, you know, the biggest challenge in special ed and this whole project right now is guidance is ever-changing. So, you know, just keeping up with it, letting people know that this is my advice at this time as we continue to get new guidance throughout the process from the state and from the national government. Liz, I have a question about testing and kids who started in the testing process or were in the midst of it when all of this started. What's the state saying about what happens to those kids? Are they going to have to wait till next year? Will there be? Obviously, you can't virtually test students just if it works that way, but I just wondered what the plan was from the state. Yep, so good question. There's not a solid guidance yet. However, for students that we've already completed the one-to-one, anything that had to be face-to-face for sessions, those students, we can, you know, finish their evaluations and then we add a team. Another thing is, let's say we finished most of the testing that we wanted to complete, but there's a few that we have not completed yet. We still may be able to come together as a team to use the information that we have to qualify students. For students who we just signed on for testing and we haven't started yet, there has not been guidance on that at this time yet, but we are being told that it will be coming soon. But at least the students who, you know, we signed on for testing 30 days ago, we're getting close to that 45-day timeline, we do have a plan for that. The other question that comes up is with my first degree students that are coming and we haven't received all of the testing. We're kind of following that model as well. We could also put students on a diagnostic placement for a short period of time as they're coming to first degree while we wait for face-to-face testing. So we have been kind of troubleshooting some ideas, but I am looking forward to more guidance from you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so.
Hey, can I just pop in really quick?
Absolutely, please.
I just want to commend everyone. My experience with my fifth grader and my first grader have been amazing. Definitely different experiences. My fifth grader is super tech savvy and he just does his thing and has a grand old time. My first grader needs my help, but she, watching her connect with her teachers and her related arts teachers online, her pride when she submits an assignment with my help and they respond back so quickly. And definitely more hands-on than I ever anticipated, but I also know a lot more about what my children are learning than I ever did before. I find that for my daughter's first grade class, they have a morning meeting that the teacher records and she sort of steps out, this is what your day is going to look like and you can do it in bits and pieces. And so that helps me as I'm also working my job from home to sort of chunk out our day in bits and pieces. But the responsiveness of all of the teachers for both of my kids, the related arts, specials, troubleshooting support has just been amazing. And I can't give my praises highly enough for the team and the work that's been done. I really, it's truly amazing. So I just want to express my gratitude.
Thank you, Amore.
I want to say also that being an educator in a different district, being on the end of supporting teachers in this work, it's, you know, this is really, really hard. And I'm watching and supporting teachers as they, it's, you know, teachers are like first responders. They're acting like first responders do. They're running into this burning building and they're saying, we're going to make this work and we're going to put this fire out and rebuild this house. I mean, it's like they're multi-layered hats. But they're doing it with a sense of so much love. And I think that that sometimes gets missed in the push-out of content. And I think that behind the scenes, it's hard for people to know, and I'm certain this is true of the teachers in Madison, that there's a sense of urgency, but it's born in the love for their students. And you can't see that and it doesn't show up on a screen possibly, or maybe it does. But there is so much that's happening and they're building this plane in the air. And I think it's important to understand that this week might have been good and next week will be better and the week after will be better. And if this ever happens again, God forbid, there will be such a, we'll always grow from this and get better at this. And I think, the other thing I want to say is, I think parents more than students are the ones who are feeling the most anxiety about this because there is this, like, I know for myself, I'm an educator, but I still have a hard time, especially when my kids were young, you know, explaining something to my own children. It's not the same, you know? And it's very, very difficult for parents. And I think that as we go forward, and I know there was a lot of mindfulness around really supporting parents, but I'm wondering if maybe as we go forward even more so, just more care for giving parents the idea that it's okay. If you're just, if you opt out for a day, it's okay. It's, you know, we don't want there to be a struggle at the kitchen table or family dynamics breaking down over something like a math problem. So I think, I don't know what that might look like, but I think some more support around, and this is globally. This is not a math thing at all. But I'm wondering if we can be mindful, just in general, in education in general, to be mindful about how parents need to be given a home pass. Like, it's all right, you know, this is hard and it's even harder when you're trying to work at home as well. So I don't know what that looks like. I'm just saying, in my own district, I'm struggling with this and we're all struggling with this. But I think it's important for us to remember that we need to maybe give some homework for parents, which is like, if stuff were great, you know, it's okay if you follow this. That's just my two cents.
Thank you, Kathy. Important points.
Can I raise a separate topic about, since long as I didn't hear it raised, about food? I was pleased to see that there was a social media message that went out a few hours ago about, that was broadcast pretty widely from the mass and public schools about being able to go under the bridge from high school, I think from 11 to 12 every day and pick up a meal if that's needed. Can the administration also be sure to email that to all parents and be very clear in the email especially, because I don't know that it's necessarily clear in the social media post, that that's open to anyone who needs it at this point and not just folks who might have been on free or reduced lunch?
Good point. Thanks, Greg. Any other comments?
That's an informed comment. To item three?
Yes, sorry. Sorry, moving on to item three, which is the age.
I think that the discussion at this point would be really premature because the executive order has needed to be interpreted. It just came out yesterday afternoon. So I would recommend that Violet, you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, that Violet and the discussion, because it's a unique group, as I said, revenue-based, you know, for negotiations, but I don't really think it would be wise to perceive anything at this very moment, maybe in a day, maybe in a week. But I would highly recommend that we get shipment to take on the executive order and how that impacts districts like Madison with our specific contract for our workers.
I appreciate that comment because I felt like we were circumventing the process and I had lots of discussions with several different people about being excluded as the personnel committee in the proposals that are discussed. So I appreciate being included.
All right.
Okay, moving on to the 2019-2020 school year calendar.
So I informed the parent community that because at this point in time, school is officially not canceled through June 18th from where we stand, but from the state level. But we were asked, made a good start effort to have a learning program up and running and to use our school days, that we would not be doing the April vacation, spring break, starting on April 6th. However, I would propose, after consulting with the MBEA, teachers, with the administration, and then also a pretty good survey from CAPS, which is the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, with 78 districts participating, it's pretty good numbers, on a recommendation on what the calendar could look like from March 30th to June 18th. We have Good Friday, which is definitely a day off. And some teachers had said, you know, is it okay to at least post something as an optional? If you don't do it, you're not going to miss anything. It's okay. If they're in a rhythm and they don't honor Good Friday, I think there's no harm in doing that, but we are officially closed for business when it comes interacting with kids and assigning things that must be returned. The other holiday we have in the calendar, Memorial Day, which goes back to late May.
May 25th.
May 25th, that's right. But looking at the calendar, we talked to the MBEA. The 78 districts that were surveyed or responded to the survey from CAPS, 56 of them, which is 72%, said they are taking an April, or I should say, a spring vacation. 72% of those 56, almost all of them, 88%, said they're taking a full week. In talking to the MBEA and talking with the administration, they're the building level administrators, I think there's a pretty strong feeling that as we go four, five-plus weeks into this, there's going to be an exhaustion level for some folks, teachers, parents, kids, and a break is going to be warranted. Now, the rule of 180 days was waived. So the proposal that collectively from the admin team and from the MBEA, though the MBEA was very mindful of, you know, the obligation of the community as well as the administration in keeping a normalcy, was that week of May 4th. Was to take the week of May 4th to May 8th off entirely as a spring break. That's just our recommendation. And additionally, not upsetting the cadence of the student schedule, but from starting next Wednesday through April 29th, which would be just the next four Wednesdays, to have students working online 9 to 12, interacting with their teachers, but from 11 to 2, granting teachers offline time to work with their colleagues when it comes to planning, when it comes to problem-solving, when it comes to delivering more PD to teachers and more training what we need to. Teachers are on the clock from 9 to 2. So to at least look at those four Wednesdays in April, from the 8th through the 29th, from 11 to 2. So the two recommendations we have are a spring break, May 4th to May 8th, where we would be all offline. And also, the next four Wednesdays, beginning on the 8th through the 29th, would be a student day of 9, you know, to 11, they can interact with teachers. But that teacher day from 11 to 2, they would be engaged in either collaborative activities or some training activities. So that would, I ran this by shipment and we certainly need to letter the law on the executive order when it comes to still completing our school calendar on June 18th. And that was our recommendation. There's no action item tonight. There's need to be taken tonight, but we would like to bring it back for a special meeting next week possibly to take action.
I have a question about that schedule that you just mentioned, the 92 being broken up into different hours.
Eleven to two.
How does that translate in a high school schedule?
I'll probably have TJ weigh in, but we have the schedule right now. The day starts at 9 o'clock at the high school, so they would access the first two hours. And they still would engage in their own learning module, the learning activities. They just wouldn't have live access to their teachers from 11 to 2. The teachers would be engaged in professional activities. TJ, you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Can you add a little bit more to that answer for Violet when it comes to how would those four Wednesday PD days play out in a high school schedule?
Very active.
One more thing I want to ask you so you can just include this.
Sure.
How does that also impact our AP students and their exams? Are they getting enough hours in?
Great question. TJ, you can probably handle both of those.
Sure. So Tom, I thought you did a nice job with the initial explanation. If the board approves the Wednesday afternoon support for professional development, which I do believe the teachers really would need and benefit from, the schedule on Wednesday would stay the same for our students. the schedule on Wednesday would stay the same for our students. But as you said, Tom, there would be no live sessions. And we would be communicating to students that during that, let's say, 9 to 11 timeframe, that they can contact electronically any of their teachers in their six area day as opposed to teachers specifically between that 9 to 11 hour. So certainly reasonable, the teachers would be able to manage that pretty effectively and we would communicate that regular, regularly to students, you know, prior to each one of those four Wednesdays. In regards to the AP and actually Yukon classes, we've been having a lot of discussions on these topics. What's really positive is that all of our Yukon and AP courses that were originally on any student's trimester three schedules are still running. You know, there was an option from College Board as well as from Yukon that you can actually stop these courses and they would refund the money, but we thought it wouldn't be a good fit. And instead, we're running all of the courses. Some of the AP courses actually never stopped even during the close, you know, based on direction from either College Board or Yukon. One of the pluses with our trimester schedule in these particular courses is the fact that we actually end up seeing the students for more time than the students would be with their professors at the college level. So in College Board, for example, shared an email with, with the Yukon, even if there was a two week gap in instruction at the high school level, it wouldn't impact the student's ability to earn credit and be prepared for the AP and Yukon assessments based on the amount of time. So we're actually in a really good place with all of our Yukon and AP courses due to the amount of time we actually have students in comparison to the amount of time they have those courses in the college setting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I also have another question. So for our younger learners, my concern is that, obviously, the long term affects this, these inconsistent amount of time that they are in the classroom and, and learning and everything that goes along with distant learning. But I also, I, I'm worried about and consider, while we are adapting this time schedule to teachers, what about the folks that are home helping their children? I think that that's a consideration as well because we can, as adults, collaborate pretty easily. We probably have private phone numbers and can do that in between lessons or in between contact with students. But I think that the, the parents need us at their convenience. If it's 9 to 2 and any time between that day, they can send an email or hope to, you know, have a telephone conference or whatever. It's really important to consider the parent piece.
I, I, I think that's a great point. I can tell you, as a parent who's working outside of the home during this, I think about that a lot, especially for the youngest kids who need to have a parent by their side during this. But I think also, one thing that I've noticed in the people I talk to with younger kids or really across the age span is the distance learning is, you're not with your teacher from 9 to 3 at all. In fact, even for the youngest learners, it's probably taped lessons, which could still happen between the hours of 11 and 2. And the worksheets and the other module items could still be happening. And I also think, you know, from the parent perspective, I don't think that would change that much. But from the teacher perspective, I think I've seen so much great collaboration and ingenuity happening because teachers in the week, in two weeks prior to kicking off distance learning, were able to really collaborate virtually, unfortunately, but really collaborate with one another and make sure that things were streamlined and somewhat uniform across the district. So I think I totally agree. And as a parent who's working outside the home, I'm grateful to you for bringing up the parent perspective. But I also think teachers, that it's because this is so brand new, really need, and because they're not interacting in the halls or in each other's classrooms when on their off periods, are really going to need that time to collaborate with each other. That's just.
I, I did not mean to imply that they are teaching from 9 to 2 or whatever the hours are. I'm just saying the time that parents have available between those hours opens it up to various parents, you know, whether they're working morning shift, afternoon shift, if they're working with their children in the morning and they're young adults in the afternoon. I just think, it was my assumption that you'd have to be available from, and I don't know that hours specifically, I wrote, scribbled down 9 to 2. I don't really know if that's accurate.
11 to 2.
Okay, sorry. So being available from 11 to 2, and, and I'm doing the same thing, so I understand how this works out. And there are some parents that prefer to, you know, contact after those hours. So I, I just wanted to, for us to be aware that there are some people at home that need far more support. And while I applaud the district principals, teachers, the staff, and that would be, you know, Bill and Art as well, and the positive attitude commitment, you know, to this learning, I, I'm just really worried about some of the ones that are lost, the ones that are not vocal or, you know, the ones that are unable to provide the support for their children as, you know, we as parents or you have mentioned, you have been able to do for your children. I know for a fact there are plenty of children that are not getting much support and I do worry about lost learning.
Kelly, if I could just jump in for just a second?
Go ahead. Yeah, Kelly, maybe you can, we talked for about two hours at our admin council meeting yesterday. This topic was talked at Lent. Maybe you could share some of those perspectives.
I, Violet, I think you bring up a really important question and a really important concern that the staff has shared as well. Our mental health staff has certainly, at the elementary level, looked at it in terms of, it's not just social emotional support for those students who are on their caseload. This is such a surreal time and unknown for both adults and children that our mental health staff has provided themselves and has provided supports and resources for parents to access on the Google Classroom site, classrooms, platform, and is making themselves available to parents to set up times to meet that are outside of that window because of that exact point that you brought up is that that's very hard when you're juggling working either at home or outside of the home as well. Another great example is our third grade team providing a Zoom Q and A on Sunday evening to parents prior to even launching the Google Classroom so that they were, that might prepare. So nothing's perfect right now. That issue, that question that you posed will remain throughout this process is how to juggle that and how to be very mindful of that. We're taking very small steps right now, but just wanted to let you know that that is something that we are constantly talking about as well. I'm not sure if I touched on everything we talked about at admin.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to.
Well, one of the things, Kelly, and I'd open this up to any administrators, we made a, an agreement yesterday that on Fridays, we would be doing a check in. So I know every building level is a little different because your staff is, you know, a certain size and then obviously at the high school, we'll have to divide that up among all the school counselors and so forth. But any of the principals want to talk about what we agreed about by Fridays? If we have kids that are not engaged or struggling, what we would do?
Well, I do want to add that I do appreciate the, the commitment and the positive attitude. And I think it's great that outside of that block of time, you have made yourself available to connect with those people that may have a more difficult time. So thank you.
But Violet, you, you brought up something incredibly important is that without the personal touch, and in your field, you know how critical that is, obviously, without having that, it's kind of hard to read body language, you know, the nonverbals and so forth. So we're looking for some indicators along the way. If students are not engaged in the work and so forth. And, and on Fridays, classroom teachers, anybody want to chime in at this point?
Well, I'll chime in. I, I think your question was really to see if any of us were listening at administrative council. That was a little bit of a test. But now we all have different systems, but, you know, Brown, I know the different schools, teachers are going to be contacting myself and our counselor for students who are not engaged. And we're going to reach out to those families and to find out why. You know, we're not judging quality of work. That's not what our purpose is. But if we have people who are not connected, who are not engaged, and we're not maybe communicating with the parents, then we are going to take that on, make some phone calls. Eliza Hayes and Brown and I met today, and that's consistent across the district. We're going to reach out to people and see how we can help.
Excellent. Appreciate it. Thank you.
On the topic of calendar, I have three items to raise, but we can tackle them. The first is that I, I support the idea of Wednesday adjustments. I think that makes a lot of sense. And I'm not sure that we actually have to take any action on it to do that, but I want to say that I support that. The second is that typically, calendar amendments would go to the policy committee. And I'd like to ask, that we ask Wendy to schedule a policy committee meeting as soon as possible. There's some complicated things to discuss about this, including the guidance from shipment, including the guidance from the governor and the commissioner, and our own calendar reports, including the fact that we had some built-in buffer days and things like that. So I would like to raise that in committee as we have done with all calendar changes before we reconvened vote on the topic as a full board. Along those lines, I, I do think that there's action to take tonight from the, you know, perspective of that committee because we have days off scheduled on the calendar Monday through the end of next week that we will not, you know, convene again. We will not convene again before those days happen. So I'd like to make a motion formally that we hold school and amend the calendar so that the days of April 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th are regular for school days.
Second.
Say.
If it has to be seconded too.
Not.
The bevy of, oh, that's, wait, you're right behind. The bevy of executive orders, it seems like at this point in time, we are still at that place where we were asked to use all those school days. Do we, do we need action? And I, I don't have a problem with taking action. But it seemed to be the last point in time before a full closure of the rest of the school year. It was just an expectation that in order to close on your original date, you'd get a program up and running and you'd use your school days. Then subsequently, in the commissioner's call, the commissioner said that we have the latitude, not in the governor's office now, mind you, the commissioner's office, that we have the latitude to hold a spring break if we so choose. It's a local decision, he won't weigh in on that. So I'm not against the action, but I'm not sure if it's necessary.
We, the intention that I heard is that we, we are not intending, I, I want to be very clear with the parents and the kids in particular that we are going to be, we are going to be holding.
Yes.
Seven days and nine, that's why I'm making that motion. Whether or not we amend the calendar further, I think can be taken up in, in, in more, more detail at the policy committee.
Okay.
If we can get, at the point that we have that policy committee meeting, as you described, it's possible that we have further guidance at that point.
Yeah.
Or clarification from shipment.
I just want to be clear that I communicated to the parents already that given where we were at this point in time, and we notified that we would be at school the week of the 6th. I mean, board action, I think, is fine, but I just want to make sure that everyone knows that I did communicate that already.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there ever a clarifying question now? Or with regards to Good Friday, is that still expected to be a day off from school?
Yes.
This observed day, that would have to be. Okay, I just.
And Tom, to your point, you know, this is not about whether or not we've communicated. I just want to make it official.
Got it.
Remote.
Understood.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. So, so Greg, I will ask you to be in touch with Wendy to schedule a meeting that has to be public, so needs to be zoomed and livestreamed. So if you all could arrange a time to do that, that would be wonderful.
And just as a reminder to folks, this seems like a good opportunity to raise it in terms of procedure that we've heard about from shipment and others before. I think, if I'm not mistaken, this will be our first attempt to hold a remote committee meeting rather than a full board meeting. And we have to treat that differently. So Emily, Violet, and, and I, who are members of the committee, will be able to, you know, along with Katie and the administration, hold regular dialogue in that meeting. But others will have to ask to be recognized, just like a member of the public for that meeting. So that's just a generic reminder in this strange world of meetings.
Does that mean that Wendy would have to do the same thing? Give everyone a code?
Yes.
And an email?
Yeah, we got a Zoom meeting. Yep.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and the public, and they would have, yeah, the public has that access as well, so.
We have the live stream.
So we can, Wendy's getting very good at doing that. Thank you, Wendy. So.
You're welcome.
I'm sure you're welcome. She will be in touch. And hopefully we can get that on the books. I agree, Greg, this is the first committee meeting, not only the board of ed, but I think this is the only committee meeting of any of the major boards because, you know, when the governor first kind of relaxed the regulations on public meetings and, and how we're all doing this, we had kind of agreed to kind of table things and work as a committee as a whole, just to keep things simple. But I, you know, I think we're getting good at it, so let's move forward. And so now we are at item number five, which is.
Can I just ask one question on the calendar?
Absolutely.
Because Greg pointed out, I think I would grant that without the board being, you know, supportive of that. So I could, I could wait to get some feedback tomorrow, but I'd like to let the parents and, and teachers know this by, you know, later than Monday possibly.
Well, yeah, I think it's important for teachers also, if they are going to have this time, to be able to communicate that to, to their students as well as.
And we could set up training in the bands, we could set up.
Greg, is there, is there?
Yeah, I, can I just make a motion that we accept the amended Wednesday schedule?
I just have a question before the motion.
Sure.
Yeah, for the Wednesday schedule for those days.
Sure.
All right, discussion.
Oh, you're a brother.
I'm sorry. So half day is considered four hours, is that correct?
No.
Not anymore.
There's, there's no minimum amount of minutes or hours to, to qualify a school day. Literally, the kids could show up and they can get in the class and then go home and that can count as a school day. That was changed a few years back.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
Okay. And just to be, just to be clear, too, the rec. Just to be clear, the recommendation is for the Wednesdays of April 8th through April 29th. And then we'll revisit it for a recommendation, depending on what the needs are, which may not be as great after that one.
And that's something that the policy committee can discuss when they, when they need. But we will get started next Wednesday.
Yep. Yep.
If this motion is approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you, folks. Now, now.
Now, item five, budget review through the end of the school year.
So we're going to see if Stacy's still paying attention.
Wake up, Stacy.
But I, you know, talked with Stacy at Lent last week and we'll talk again Monday. The challenge here is that probably the biggest ticket item is the transportation obligation. And that is going to be, as we talked about at the beginning of the meeting, I can't think of a better word, a back build, if you will, by federal dollars. That is a huge difference maker in the order of magnitude of hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we need to really have our minds clear. And again, I'm going to lean on shipment on that one, which I think we're going to know probably in the next day or two, where that will be going. Because if that's going directly to towns or districts, and that's another thing too, is for the towns, for the school district, for bed, those are all important questions. And if we get clarity on that, that makes a big difference on the current year budget.
Well, one of the reasons that I, that I was hopeful that we could have this on the agenda tonight was so that we might even recognizing that there are many issues about which we don't have all the facts at this point, but that we might be able to raise areas that could be of interest from an educational perspective. So example, and you brought this up again.
So example, and you brought this up again tonight, Tom, we are not now a one-to-one community with respect to Chromebooks.
Yep.
Now, we have an inventory of 450, I think.
Oh, I don't know how many numbers, but we didn't count them each one, but we ballparked them. Yeah.
All right. Around 450 there. That is inventory to address special issues, perhaps.
Yep.
Family issues.
Yep.
Or breakdowns or whatever. But if we have monies coming back into the district, maybe we could be a one-to-one community. And also Greg raised earlier the point that now we're making meals available to everyone who's under 18 years of age, whether or not they are currently on free and reduced lunch. And that could be used to finance that as well. I'm just not sure what other educational needs that could be filled if we have extra money in the budget. Not extra money, but if we have money that's available to us because it's not being expended on other items.
And I think we're going to, if the federal program, the intended, does make its way down to the local level, I think we will see that. That remains to be seen.
Yep.
But I do think that that's a distinct possibility, and we have an obligation then to revisit at that point in time. I don't measure this in months. I think days to a week that we'll have priority on this. You know, this is something that, an executive order comes out, Shippman sends out global guidance to the state or all of its, you know, all of their clients. And then we make individual phone calls and we look at the new ones that are individual contracts. And they've been responsive within 24 to 48 hours.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I can hear.
Okay. I've been getting cut in and out all night. I apologize. And I apologize in advance for the uninteresting information compared to what we've been talking about for the last hour and a half. But start to, you know, communicate at the building level to see where we are as far as funds available, funds needed through the year. Obviously, this year's rule is different. So with all these executive orders, I've been following them day after day. They change constantly. You know, it was late last night with Executive Order 7R, where they said where we need to work with our transportation providers and come up with some kind of amended sort of contract to make sure that, you know, we try to continue to pay them somewhat in order to help us prepare for continuing their services when we do need them, whether it be this spring or in the fall. So, you know, that's up to you now. Currently, for transportation, you know, our budget's about 1.9 million. We spend about 1.4. Obviously, we budgeted the full 1.9 million. So if the executive order did say that we need to continue to pay them, we are fine as far as the budget is concerned. However, there's still that federal stimulus package that is out there that we're trying to investigate, have our attorneys review, to see what that means. Because it affects, obviously, every district within the state. So if we do get some reimbursement, that would create some funds as far as our transportation. But we don't know. It's a huge number, and it's a huge unknown at this point. That's the biggest piece, I would say, right now. And we'll get into a little bit more detail than you probably want to hear because the bigger items, you know, in our budget, I'll read through them because I know it's late and everybody's tired. But as far as personnel, we have a modest balance right now. You know, we're, again, executive orders are out there. We're committed to pay all employees through the end of the school year. The balances on hand, with the balances on hand, we're able to absorb the costs related to any of this online distance learning. So we're able to absorb these additional costs with these savings from not having to pay substitutes, you know, during this time that we're at a school or practice development, anything like that. We're also looking at our numbers conservatively. What if we do, you know, reconvene and we do need substitutes? So we're being conservative. We have balances in hand. I don't see us seeing anywhere in a deficit as far as those items. The other accounts that I looked at was legal. We do have the NACE negotiations that are up and coming. I think the balance is in there as well as some other possible settlements. I think the balances in our legal accounts are more than sufficient. So we're not going to have to line and transfer anything to our legal account, nor do we have any access over there. The other big item is Special Ed. So currently, we're looking at an excess for our outplacement of a little bit over $100,000, you know, for bearing reasons. There are some outplacements that were brought back in due to the ESF at Holson. But we don't know. Again, what's going to happen if we, school reconvenes? Do we have to increase our evaluations or do we have more need for additional services? Again, another unknown. One other thing that came out of the Executive Order 7R was that we can still expect to see our Special Ed reimbursement. So right now, we're looking at another $240,000 to $250,000 that we were anticipating. We're a little concerned with everything going on. But with this executive order, we were reassured that we should be getting those funds in. So that definitely is, you know, a huge positive. The final, well, actually, two other items. Maintenance. I talked to Bill Nissen today. Utilities, you know, it's a million-dollar budget. So every year, we have a variance, plus or minus. This year, do we have more of a variance because schools are closed for a certain period of time? Perhaps, yes. We're hoping that any surplus in the utilities that we can line and transfer when you'll come to the Board of Ed, obviously, for maintenance projects. So that's, you know, we haven't had any, we've been so busy trying to just move forward. We haven't had any internal conversations about those. But I've just kind of been summarizing things as I've been thinking of things. The final item would be at the building level. So we give, you know, our core allocations every year, and individual buildings have a certain amount of money allocated to them. Historically, we gave about an April 1st to April 15 deadline. This year, we extended it to May 1st because of what's going on. We figure things are slow. People need more time. People are working at home. But right now, the deadline is May 1st. We don't know what's going to happen, obviously, April 20th. You know, if we decide there is going to be a graduation or celebrations or expenses related to graduation, you know, at that point, we'll know more. So I think it's May 1st deadline. It's still a condition for us to gather all our information at that point in time. Again, more unknown. So my plan is to continue to keep on top of all these executive orders, monitor the budget constantly. We're tracking all of our COVID expenses. We created additional accounts. Currently, we have about $60,000 in expenses for online learning as well as supplies, still dealing with supplies. Although we do believe that it will be covered within the Board of Ed budget, we're hoping that some of these expenses will still be seen as reimbursable, which we could get a reimbursement of about 75%. So that's my plan moving forward. I know I kind of vague. I didn't have a lot of, you know, good answers at this point, but I'm continuing to monitor, monitor everything and update as things change daily.
Stacy, can you give just a brief overview on the budget process and how it stands now, given all of?
The 2021 operational budget.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you.
So Executive Order 7I, I think it was. We did try to turn off a lot of the letters that come out from the number, but the governor said that the Board of Selectment can authorize the Board of Finance to move forward with developing a budget and establishing a mill rate. So tonight, the Board of Selectment met. They revised the budget calendar to allow the Board of Finance to reconvene tomorrow to look at the budget again. And then on April 29, they will hold their public hearing. The Board of Finance will hold their public hearing to listen to public comments from tomorrow. We're going to print, I'm going back a little bit. So we're going to print after tomorrow, the Board of Finance is going to reconvene. They're going to come up with a revised budget. We're going to print that in the paper, if we can, in the source. If not, it will also be posted on the website. On April 29, the Board of Finance was already scheduled to hold a public hearing. The public hearing will now be a Zoom meeting. So people will have time from when it was posted on the website until April 29 to comment. And then the following week, I think, that the Board of Finance is set to do a final, set the final budget and to set the mill rate for the upcoming school year.
And the Board of Finance meeting tomorrow night, is that a public meeting?
It will be a public Zoom meeting, I believe, except for 6 p.m. tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Stacy.
You're welcome.
Stacy, did the $145,000 go into the Special Ed reserve already?
$145,000. They had to postpone all town meetings. So that was not finalized. I believe in Kirk's film, film court, I think it's, that was around what we returned, but we asked for less to be returned. I want to say it was 16, 5 or 85, whatever that was.
No, you're right. It was 65,000.
Yeah.
You know, we said 145 forward, and we asked that 65 be returned. And that would boost Liz's reserve fund to 385,000.
Yeah, I believe the 65 wins the Board of Selectment and Board of Finance. However, the town meeting has to be postponed. That was never reached yet. So that is not finalized yet.
Okay, so we have no idea when that will be taken out?
That is not unspoken right now. I will definitely talk this off and off about moving that forward. You know, with these Zoom meetings and everything going on, some things just got pushed off.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question as well. Do we put our, like, pilot and security program, do we put that on hold? Or what do we do with that in some of these memberships?
I'm a little on the security program.
The security workers?
No, where we have, you know, the.
Oh, the house?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, they're just inactive. We're not that careful.
But we're still on the hook for whatever the cost is.
We paid for this year's service.
Yeah.
Yes. That was a service agreement we paid for this year.
So we've already paid for it?
Yes.
So there's no potential saving from that, from that area?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks for clarifying that, Kirk.
Well, I thought I screwed up earlier and Greg had to come in and correct me. I thought maybe I'd take a shot again.
All right. Thanks.
Good.
Any board member comments? So.
I'm sorry. I have a quick question. Is there any savings from the food service?
Art?
I think that the food source is going to be a big expense. I don't think that there's going to be any savings because there's no revenue coming in right now. You know, everything is driven, it's in some funds, not in general. And, you know, Stacy is letting me know if I'm making any inaccurate statements about it. But, you know, it tends to operate at a break even. We almost never break even. We usually lose from $30,000, $40,000. This is what we're hoping that we've been on track for, which is a big improvement over prior to the year. But there's no revenue coming in at all. It's all expense from this point on. Especially if we have to pay, you know, all the salaries of people that are not working. We're no revenue coming in to offset that. So also, the meals that are going to be served, we haven't had much. We haven't had that many takers on meals that we're giving out now during the closure. Our highest number was hit last Friday and gave up 28 meals. While it isn't back open to anyone, there is no national school lunch program reimbursing us for the meal. So it's all, you know, the district's under all of it. So it's absolutely open and available, as you said. But there is no benefit of the federal reimbursements or any kind of monetary fees. There's no, I'm sure there's no savings to be had there.
I concur. There's more expenses than no revenue coming in.
Do we have, Stacy? Who?
Yep.
Who is monitoring the potential for any benefit from the federal programs that are currently in place? Is there a central, central area for doing that? Is it you and Shippman in combination? How are we monitoring the potential?
Stacy, let me start and you can finish. So our professional organizations, CASBO, which is the Connecticut Association of School Business Professionals for Stacy, CAPS, the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, have done a really good job communicating to us a summary, a kind of a one-stop shop of here's all the things that affect your district. Shippman is largely helping them through that. Katie is doing something very similar as well for Board of Ed. So it's going into Finance. It's coming into my office. Art is pulling the loop on, obviously, transportation and the youth services. Liz has been the point person for special education. Stacy's confident in all of these things.
No, I just wanted, and the reason I ask is because, you know, with so much changing and so rapidly, you know, I just want to make sure that we don't miss an opportunity to draw on available funds.
And we meet on a regular basis, either virtually now, but in contact. We've had that, you know, as a standing meeting every Monday, the central office team. And now we're just doing that on a meeting basis.
Thank you.
Yeah, and there are constant emails of my Board of Ed 12, CASBO, Connecticut Association of Business Officers. They're sending out emails and correspondences. You know, a lot of these executive orders are combined between the education side as well as the town side. So it's constant. They all come across my desk. And, you know, we're trying to catch them all, but I do think all the emails are coming back and forth between all the organizations as well as the attorneys who are involved because it's affecting every district, every municipality in the town. You know, everybody's pretty much trying to summarize and gather all the information together.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So I need a motion to approve the minutes of March 10, 2020, board meeting?
So moved.
I have a quick question.
Discussion?
There was something left on the minutes. I sent you a, and you know, I'll give you that if you saw it.
Hi, Stephen. I'm sorry. When did you send it? I apologize.
That's okay. No, it was today after I saw the minutes. But there was a brief discussion about how a parent was concerned about exposure at Holson from a teacher who could have been exposed. And there was just a brief discussion about that, but it was left on my minute.
Okay, so should we table this or approve as amended?
Probably table.
Yeah. So we'll table this one. So now I need a motion to table action item 7.
Make a motion to table.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the minutes of March 24, 2020, special board meeting?
So moved.
Done.
All in favor? Or discussion? I'm sorry.
I have a discussion item on that topic. I just want to raise, and I don't think we need to get into the content of it, but I just want to clarify that as far as I can tell from policy or procedure or Robert's rule standpoint, this is the first time we are including in minutes of the meeting transcription of what board members or other speakers said. I'm not weighing in on that as a pro or con. I'm just indicating that it exists.
Thank you, Greg. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Done.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Just. Just got to tell you, the executive order 7R interpretation.